...Board of County Commissioners, November 14, 2019. I am at the top of the agenda, going to move to excuse Commissioner Portune from the meeting.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. By way of introductions, Leslie Hervey is at the very far end of the dais. She is the Assistant to the Clerk of the Board, Jackie Pianiotto, who is to my direct right. To my left is the Vice Chair, Vice President of the Board, Stephanie Summerodumas. Next to her is Jeff Aludo, the County Administrator, and Michael Friedman, our legal counsel, is at my far left. We start our meetings with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you can. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm also going to move to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Ms. Greenhouse? Yes.
Ms. Summerodumas?
Yes.
Thank you. We don't have any speakers' cards, so we're going to move into the comments and motions of Commissioners. Commissioner Summerodumas.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few items to mention. There is a resident who comes fairly religiously to speak with us about the 5G cell tower and her concerns, and so a few meetings ago, I asked her to give me a call so maybe I could do something to help her or to relieve some of her anxiety. But I did contact the Governor's Office as it relates to regulations and how she could get more information on this issue. The Governor almost immediately responded back from his office and gave me some very critical information that I passed on to the resident. She was very thankful for that, but doesn't take away her fear of the 5G cell towers and sent... She sent me lots of pictures and they are everywhere. You don't really notice them, but I think that was helpful in her effort to try to make a change. So I thank the Governor's Office for that. Also went to St. Vincent de Paul on November the 8th for their ribbon cutting ceremony for their new building. Very beautiful building. They've been working on it for quite a while. Got lots of donations for that purpose, so I plan on going back and taking a more extensive tour. On January... On November the 12th, I met with Kristin Schripling. She is from Women Helping Women, and they have a divert program, which is excellent, and I'll be giving the Commissioners a packet on that to find out more. They're working directly with the Police Department and also other partnerships in the community under domestic violence and how to immediately impact the people that are being impacted by that... those incidents. So I'm just really proud of them. They're getting funding right now, may need future funding, but they were not here for funding, but just to tell me about the program. And then on November the 13th, I attended the Forest Park Business Recognition Breakfast. It was excellent. Lots of great companies out there doing great things, so that was a good thing to see. And then a gentleman from the Probation Department came to see me to look at other programs that he's interested in, how the county can help him. And then there, I also met with a UC student who's getting her doctorate in nursing and just wanted to know really how Hamilton County Commission works and how nursing can be a proponent in moving things forward in the health field in Hamilton County. Very interesting conversation with her. I met with Investment Advisory Committee yesterday to look at our investments. You may want to talk more about that and where we are with that, but Robert Guerin heads that, and so our Treasurer, he was very instrumental in letting us know what our future looks like in investment. And also yesterday, I met with Neil Tillo from Talbot House, just really trying to explain to me even more what Talbot House does and who they partner with, which I'm very much aware of Talbot House, but their partners is what he was here to kind of inform me about. And then this morning, as the member of SWRIP, which is a workforce development organization throughout the state, we had our Board of Directors meeting this morning, and also the OKI Board of Directors meeting this morning I attended, where they honored Commissioner Portune, and I know you'll be speaking more about that. And that will end my report, Madam President.
Thank you. Yeah, there is some overlap in what we've been doing. So I also attended the St. Vincent de Paul opening in the West End. It's fantastic. It's a... It's a building that's going to serve the needs of people in a very collaborative way, so it was a wonderful opening and got a brief tour, as did you, but hope to go back. And the Forest Park Business Association recognition was also very nice, and I was glad that we were well represented at that breakfast. My last item is looking forward. The Commission on Women and Girls, as they do every year, are going to make recommendations to the County Commission, and so that will happen at our meeting next week on Thursday. It's our evening meeting out in Woodlawn at their municipal building, and so they will be at the top of the agenda with their recommendations. They will all be there. We've allotted some time towards the top of the agenda for that, but interestingly, one of the recommendations is going to be related to, not the divert program specifically, but having first responders and advocates on the scene of a domestic violence situation so that the victims of domestic violence can access resources and partners at the moment that they need them. So I know that's what you were referring to, so I will look forward to those recommendations coming forward. And it's a public meeting. Everyone is welcome to come. The Commission on Women and Girls has been working really hard for the past year to try to understand the needs in the community and then respond to what they've learned, and so I think it's going to be a really dynamic, interesting list of recommendations, and so please put it on your calendar. It's our evening meeting, 6:30, at the Woodlawn Municipal Building, so we will look forward to that. That's all I've got. Administrator Aludo, do you have a by leave?
I do. I've got one by leave in your packet today. This is a communication from... regarding a proposed annexation between the City of Chiviet and Green Township. Before you is a communication that initiates that, also with the signed petition from the property owner in this particular case, along with the past resolution and ordinance from both Green Township and Chiviet. So this is... Ultimately, we'll need a resolution from the Board, but at this point, you're just receiving it for the record, and I believe the County Engineer is at this point checking to make sure the maps coincide, et cetera. So, Jackie, anything else we need to do on this at this point, other than receive for the record?
No, because I've already referred to the Engineer.
Excellent.
Okay. I have gotten a number of calls about this, particularly from the Mayor of Chiviet, related to timing, and so we received this for the record today. And then I know Ted, you're coming up here in a minute for a multitude of items on the agenda, so I'm going to ask you a question related to timing, if you know it, for the annexation in front of us. So we need... I will move that we receive this communication for the record.
Second.
Ms. Greenhouse? Yes.
Ms. Summerodumas?
Thank you. Jeff, do you have another item?
No, nothing else formal. So if you want... If you... I don't know, if you wanted Ted to address this particular item...
Right now, I don't have any information to tell you about the scheduling for the annexation. That I can't... That's what your question's about.
Yep.
Yeah. I don't have anything to add at this point in time.
Okay.
I mean, I can't really speak to it, but what I'll do is I'll get the information and get back to you.
That'd be great.
I will do that, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yeah, great. Thank you. Do you have anything related to the music venue?
Oh, just in terms of an update, Commissioners. So as the Board knows, we've been actively advancing and working with the city on the... expediting the music venue process, or the location of the music venue and the initiation of the venue through city zoning. My understanding is that the city today will be taking action on an amendment to the cooperation agreement on the banks that reflects some of the, for the most part, the principles that were discussed between Commissioner Portune and Mayor Cranley. So the city is taking action today. We have exchanged drafts going back to early August, when the county forwarded a draft to the city of an amended cooperation agreement. So we'll see what the city passes today and what they send over. I would suspect that at a minimum, it will include the codification of those principles that Commissioner Portune and Mayor Cranley had discussed. At the same time, we'll want to look at it to make sure that it... that all the other basic tenets and principles of the banks' relationship are preserved. So we want to make sure that we are changing what needs to be changed, at the same time that we are leaving in place those things that fundamentally relate to the positive nature of the banks' relationship that we've had with the city in the past, you know, in terms of the flow of funds, how revenues are allocated and distributed, how advances of funding are repaid, how conveyances of lots happen, all those types of things that we want to make sure we preserve in this version of the cooperation agreement. So again, we've exchanged drafts. We've been discussing this with the city manager. We'll likely need to meet with the manager and his staff after we get this from the city, but we'll keep working to make sure that we arrive at that collective agreement moving forward.
Okay. So just to be clear, the... This commission will have to approve of whatever agreement, you know, has come to through the city and the county, and we should expect to see that within the next couple of weeks, hopefully. And in the meantime, the zone change that is required is due to be voted on next Wednesday, I believe, for city council, and so we expect that to move forward. At the same time, we are working on this cooperative agreement that I think collectively we all agree to in principle. We just need to have the language worked out.
Exactly. That's my understanding precisely.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Welcome.
And thank you for keeping us in the loop on it. So I'm going to digress for one second. Commissioner, you mentioned the OKI meeting today and the recognition of Commissioner Portune. So Todd served on OKI... I don't know how many years. I think maybe 20 or so. So they had a lovely recognition for him this morning at that meeting. A lot of people got up and they spoke. Todd was on the phone, and so I know he was very grateful, but I think his service is so appreciated, especially in the space related to transportation and collective work with Kentucky, Indiana, and Ohio. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that. All right. So Ted, you are up. Oh, no, I'm sorry. No, you're not. No, 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 no. You are not... You are numbers two through 13, but you're not item one. Sorry. I know I keep doing this to you, right? So item number one on the regular agenda is a resolution approving the amended and restated county water area contract and authorizing its execution. So Jeff, I assume you're going to give us some background here.
Sure. So as the Board is aware, under the Ohio Revised Code, counties are empowered to contract with municipalities to provide water services to the unincorporated areas of the county. The county actually has eight such agreements with... We've got the largest, obviously, with the City of Cincinnati, but also Wyoming, Cleaves, Loveland. There's various providers of water within the county, where the county contracts with that provider to provide water service to the unincorporated areas. So the... Again, the largest of those with the City of Cincinnati services around 92,000 accounts within Hamilton County. That particular agreement, which went into effect, I think roughly 40 or 30 years ago or so, was set to expire in 2017, but was extended by court order. I'm sure the Board will recall, given a dispute that we had with the City of Cincinnati related to the multiplier that was being charged. The multiplier had been at various levels, but most recently at 1.25, the city times the city rate. There was discussion at the city about that multiplier increasing that led to a dispute with the city, the court's involvement in extending the agreement, and ultimately a resolution between the county and the city on that particular point. So the agreement that is before you today is the agreement that is the result of that resolution with the city, and includes the holding of that multiplier at a 1.25 level for the next 50 years through 2069. It also allows for the continuation of the county's .08 unincorporated area improvement account, which goes to fund infrastructure expansion, fire hydrant maintenance in the unincorporated areas. So all in all, I think, while this did result in a legal proceeding, I think at the end of the day, we were able to work something out with the city that was productive, and I think we're in a good place moving forward. I know the... At least the majority of the townships are supportive of this effort of the counties in maintaining stability in that multiplier for the foreseeable future.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to thank the administration for working through this issue. This was a bone of contention, and we were able to successfully keep the water rates flat out in the townships, which I think was the reasonable approach here. So thank you for the work that you did. This is a good resolution, and our partners in the townships, I know, are grateful for the resolution of this issue. So are there any questions?
Just a comment, Madam President. I also want to thank you for your effort, and because the rate was seemingly going up and up, and we were able to maintain it at the 1.25, which is definitely a victory. So I want to thank you also.
Thank you very much, and a lot of people on the county team worked on this, including Pam Sears in the County Prosecutor's Office, Holly Christman here, Mike Friedman, Roger Friedman, a lot of folks on the county team who had a hand in bringing this to a resolution, including some folks who are no longer here. So this has been going on for a little bit of time. And obviously, it ultimately took two parties to reach the resolution, so I want to thank our counterparts over at the city, too, for their part in reaching this agreement.
Well, and it's a 50-year agreement, so none of us will be revisiting this. So... Well, you never know.
You never know.
There'll be a lot of longevity from all of us. All right. So I'm going to move that we approve of the resolution approving the amended and restated county water area contract and authorizing its execution.
Second.
Ms. Greenhouse? Yes.
Ms. Summerodumas?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, now, Ted. Ted Hubbard, County Engineer, you've got items two through 13.
Right. We've got a agenda today. Pretty busy. First of all, item two pertains to a resolution that would authorize an agreement, an MRF agreement with the City of Mary for the... Of Madeira, excuse me, for the improvement of Euclid Road from Miami to Camargo. Item three is a resolution that would also authorize an agreement with the City of Madeira to improve Euclid Avenue from Miami to Hosbrook. So... And then item four pertains to a resolution, another MRF resolution, with the City of Madeira, to authorize the improvement of Camargo Road. Item five pertains to a resolution that would authorize a name change of Heritage Drive in Colerain Township to Dale Woods Way. This is endorsed by Colerain Township. Item six pertains to a resolution would authorize a joint agreement between Hamilton County and Harrison Township for the use of salt and of a rubber tire loader. One of the things we do in maintenance is we try to partner with the townships and municipalities so that we can efficiently perform snow and ice agreements. This works out really well. So, you know, this is some... These types of agreements have been very, very helpful. We have, you know, we have domes all over the county that we can draw from, and so we don't have to do maybe as much pre-treating as some. And I know there was an issue... I got a letter, Denise, about brine. We don't have to use it as much as some, and our brine's locally made anyway, to answer that question, but that question came up. But the point is, with all these domes, we're able to... We don't have to do as much pre-treating as maybe some other entities have to do. Okay. That leads us to item seven, a resolution authorizing an agreement between Hamilton County and Green Township for the purchase of Rightaway Neasements on Harrison Avenue. Now, this pertains to the Harrison Philview Circle project, but this is along Harrison Avenue, just to be very clear. Okay? Item... That's item seven. Now, item eight pertains to a resolution authorizing a purchase contract with Capital Electric for the maintenance of traffic signals. We do privatize, to some degree, maintenance of traffic signals. We also have electricians that go out that are... That work for the County Engineers' Office, but this helps supplement that effort. Item nine pertains to a resolution for the appropriation of property along Harrison Avenue, but we are very close to a resolution, so that's a good thing. Same is true for item 10. It's a resolution appropriating property along Harrison Avenue, but again, we are very, very close to resolution, probably won't have to go to appropriation. Item 11 pertains to a resolution appropriating property along Harrison Avenue, and again, it's the same condition. Ah... Let me see. Then we go to item 12, a resolution... That's another resolution appropriating property along Harrison Avenue, but in this case, I'm going to ask that you pull that from your agenda, because we have reached agreement, and we don't think we need to have that appropriation.
Pull item number 12?
Yes.
Okay.
Then item 13 pertains to a resolution that awards a contract to Barrett Paving Materials for the resurfacing and rehabilitation of Anderson Ferry Road in Delhi Township. This is a major project, $842,000, half of which will come from the Ohio Public Works Commission, so we're real pleased about that. I will take any questions.
Any questions or comments?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. I'm going to move that we approve of items two through 11 and 13 on the regular agenda.
Second.
Ms. Greenhouse? Yes.
Ms. Summerodumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Before I go, I normally don't do this, but I'm going to... I did not... Unfortunately, I was at OKI, but I did not get to... I didn't get there for Todd's... For the program for Todd. But I would like to say a few things, because I think everybody needs to hear. I've worked with... I've worked with Todd for many, many years. I mean, I knew Todd when he was on city council, and we were talking about transit issues, and he has been a remarkable person to work with. And I'd like to say this, he, he's always driven to solutions. And, and the thing that, that I, his insight and his drive to solution is absolutely remarkable. It really is. We have been involved and gone to meetings where it was controversial, heavily controversial sometimes. And I remember, I remember this, I think in today's political climate, I think it's appropriate to share this. We were in Newtown, and we had a very controversial project that we were, the only reason we went, we didn't go to disrupt anything, we went to just to see if citizens had questions for us, and we did. And we ended up being there till late at night, 10:30, 11:00, I don't remember the exact time. And we were walking out, we were both pretty tired, you know, but we were answering questions, and a lady comes up, and she said, this, this was at the Miami Valley Christian Academy, the lady comes up to us and says, "Well, listen, is there anything we can do for you?" And Todd says, you know, he said, "Yeah, you can pray that we, that we have guidance that we're doing the right thing." And I thought to myself, you know, humanity, in our humanity, we always work on issues and projects, and, you know, we have limited experience, limited experience sometimes and limited perspective. And we embed ourselves into that position. We should always be willing to try to submit whatever we believe or what we think is right to ultimate perspective. And Todd did that, I'll never forget it. And, you know, he's a great guy. My prayers are with him. I can't tell you how pleased I am to have worked with him. Yes, I'm a Republican, you all know that, but that doesn't matter.
We don't hold it against you, Ted.
Well, you know what, Denise, the truth of the matter is, in the end, that really isn't what counts. And I am so thankful that I've been able to work with him, my prayers are with him, and I've really, it's been a privilege. Thank you.
Thank you. So on that note, I'm going to digress one more time. There is an event for Todd on the 18th. It's on Monday night, right, at 5:30 at Memorial Hall, and it will be a celebration of, you know, his service and a recognition of his service. So just, that also is open to the public, everyone's welcome to attend. Victoria's organizing it, and I understand it's going to be a bit of a party. So, yeah, everybody's welcome to go, 5:30 Monday on the 18th at Memorial Hall.
We will also recognize him at the TID meeting on Monday, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Moving through the agenda, we have a number of people in the audience related to some of the agenda items, and so I don't know if any of you want to speak, but I do have a quick comment related to item 14, which is $250,000 to help with a project that we've been working on for a while. Melissa, do you want to come forward and speak to this real quickly? I mean, this is a bit of a good news story and a story of partnerships, so could you just illuminate a little bit?
Happy to. Good afternoon, I'm Melissa Johnson, I'm Vice President of Industrial Development at the Cincinnati Port Authority. I'm responsible for our industrial development practice, which really means that we're striving to repurpose underutilized industrial land throughout Hamilton County for job creation. We had been in negotiations for this Dow Chemical site, the former Dow Chemical parcel located in Redding for quite some time. For those of you familiar or not familiar with it, it's heavily impacted geotechnically and environmentally, primarily environmentally, and we feel that the port's ownership was appropriate for the community and moving the site forward into a more productive and active reuse. So we have been studying the site for a while and built a capital plan for its redevelopment that is rather ambitious and extensive, but the commissioners and the county's support of this, even in this amount, will be a step towards activating that property again and engaging and showing that partnerships are grateful for your support. I know Redding is ecstatic about this, so I'm sure that they would share the same sentiment. So we appreciate working with Jeff and Holly on this and for your support.
Yeah, thank you for your work on this. It also reminds me of the Lachland situation, where we've got another property where the port, the county, and the community of Lachland and others are partnering to also make a site with a bunch of, it was a 12 or 14 acres or so?
Close to that, right.
Yeah, ready for job development there. And so this is the work that we all need to do collectively, so thank you for everything that you're doing. And I just wanted to highlight that item on our agenda and your work on it, so thanks for being here.
Appreciate it.
All right, so we've got, as I said, a number of other items, but they're all on the consent agenda. MSD's here, do you guys want to come forward on the item, or we are okay?
We want to see our question.
Okay, all right, very good. Are there any questions or comments related to any of the consent agenda items?
Madam President, just a couple comments on item 15, which is a budget adjustment for 12.3 million for our 27th payroll transfer, which we can't, as a, as a commission, can't do very much about that. We have to pay our people, and it's an additional payroll date, so I have no problem with that. But the other adjustments, 16 and 17, budget adjustment of 2.1 million for the Prosecutor's Office for the purpose of hiring more staff, new staff, low employee vacancy, unanticipated vacation payout, employee resignation, and it's, and also the court reporters, budget adjustment number 17, which is 839,000 for the court reporters. And my concern, of course, I will vote for this, but is the fact that there are certain departments that we technically don't have jurisdiction over that they were elected positions, the Prosecutor's Office, Clerk of Courts, the Sheriff Department. And just really concerned about what are we as a commission going to do, or what are they going to do, and what are we going to direct them to take a more active role in being more strategic in these over-budget issues? I know we have to pay, because we want people to get paid for work, but what are they doing? What plan do they have to, to make sure we don't come back again next year with these astronomical numbers? So I would like to even direct administration to formally address these areas of over-budget and ask them, can they develop a plan where we can look at the numbers and they'll be somewhat smaller the following year? So I will vote for this, but I do have some concern as it relates to the numbers.
I too have concerns related to those numbers. Jeff, can you give us an overview, not only of kind of the situation here? We did have a very restricted budget last year because of some of the budget cuts that we're making, but, but the Prosecutor's Office is a unique situation, as well as the court. So would you help us better understand?
Yeah, sure. So, and as we've advised the Board throughout the, throughout the year, the numbers that the Board is acting on today are not, and I know as the Commissioners know, as we've been briefing throughout the year, these are not necessarily a surprise. We've been tracking the, these departments as being over-budget throughout most of the year. And I'll just remind the Board that for the budget for 2019 was, it was a very difficult budget year, where we, in addition to implementing new revenue sources, et cetera, there were also various departments where we budgeted at levels that we quite frankly knew were not going to be sustainable in the long term. So we have some of that dynamic playing out as well. The Prosecutor's Office, as Commissioner Portune has brought up several times in the past, is a unique situation that they are able to go to the court to have their, their budget established through the court. So this, this budget adjustment today is within that court-established budget, although it is higher than the amount that the, that the Board of County Commissioners ultimately approved for, for 2019. So we, to Commissioner Summer Dumas's point, we absolutely will continue working with these departments on a plan, especially as we move forward into the next budget year, to make sure that we are, to the best we can, sticking within the established budget, as is important for every single department in the county. So, absolutely.
Thank you. Thanks for the explanation. All right. I will, any other questions or comments?
No questions.
Madam President, if I could, just very briefly, just also call attention to one particular item here, and I think is the very last item on your agenda. It's another, I'd say, good news story, and I wanted to just highlight, so James Noises here from Planning and Development, I don't know if he's specifically here for this item or not, but it's a grant, this is a hazard mitigation grant that the county has received for the purchase of seven single-family, one multifamily property on the west fork of the Mill Creek in Coleraine Township, to purchase and get some of these properties out of the floodplain that have been historic flooding issues. So I believe at this point, all of these property owners have agreed to the buyout, essentially, through this grant program. This is primarily funded through the federal government, also with some participation from the state. The county also has a small level of participation in this, but it's in-kind services, there's no cash. But I just want to thank James and Greg Smory, our floodplain administrator, for working on this project and getting these resources for the county so that we can implement this. And also, as I do so, also recognize that I forgot to mention James and Mohammed Islam as a thank you for working on the water agreement as well. So James, thanks for everything you guys are doing up there.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Without further ado, then, I am going to move that we approve of consent agenda items 14 through 30.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. We have nothing else in front of us, unless you have anything, Commissioner?
I don't have anything else.
All right, I'm going to move that we adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.